Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting this evening. It's nice to see such a big crowd. We do have a lot to try and accomplish on our agenda. And the number one item that we want to talk about this evening is to provide everyone in the town with an update of where we stand with respect to our negotiations with the MBTA lease. So just to take a few steps back and remind us why we're here today. So at our last town meeting, the town voted or charged the Board of Selectmen to go and attempt to negotiate a lease with the MBTA for the rail trail. We've been doing that since the summer. And I can't say that we have final terms of the lease yet. We are still in the infancy of a negotiation. But given that it's February 1st today, and we committed to being extremely transparent in this process, I asked our attorney, Mr. Steven Anderson, I forgot, to come here this evening and to give an overview of where we stand and an overview of the process that we have embarked on and the steps that are necessary to get us to the point where, you know, the town will either approve or not approve the lease. Again, this evening is only about the lease and the process that we've gone through. We will have some other open hearings where we can talk more about some of the other items or the timeline. But this evening is really an informational session. And I would like to very much thank Steven Anderson. He has been instrumental in assisting us to get to where we are today. Certainly, he is well, well-respected at the MBTA. And I think, you know, because of him, we have been able to actually have in-person meetings with their consultant, which is something that is unheard of. I know there's some people in this audience who have worked with the MBTA, and they know how difficult it is to actually talk to them and negotiate with them. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and he's going to walk you through our outline for going forward and what we've been able to try and negotiate to this point and what the next steps in the process are.
Thank you, Adam Chair, members of the board. You can hear or perhaps not hear my voice. I apologize in advance. I hope you're going to be able to hear me. If you're having difficulty, please move up. I will do the best I can, but we can only work with the handicaps we'll dealt at any given moment. So if we can go to the first slide, I've prepared for the board an outline of where we are, and if the town were to approve, how we get from here essentially to construction and a rail trail in reality. I want to walk through the outline briefly, and then I'm going to turn to the lease and where we stand with respect to the lease. I apologize for the fact that these are slides heavy on text. They're going to be hard to see, but I hope we can get the feeling of what's involved, the complexity and the details, both of the process and of the lease. So the first question is, of course, funding. And you have the Friends Group in town that has pledged to fund this project essentially from soup to nuts. And we've had some direct discussions with representatives of the Friends Group about putting together a memorandum of understanding to reduce that commitment to writing and to try to flush it out with some milestones as to when money needs to come in the door and in what amounts. And I believe it's fair to say they are receptive to that idea, and it will help to clarify things for everyone. So one of the things that the town's consultant will do is put together sensible milestones for which we need to have money in the bank before we can undertake the milestone. So the first major phase is going to be the design phase, and I'll talk about that in some detail as we go through. Then there is a bidding phase where you go to bid and get a construction contractor. And then, of course, there's the construction phase. And finally, when it's up and running, an O and M phase where it's being maintained and so on, you know, through the years. Okay? The estimate that was in the feasibility study was about $1.37 million for the, what they call the high-cost option, one that incorporates environmental insurance, a survey, and various other steps and protections for the town. And it incorporates a contingency of 20% in the costs. So the funding is one that we are planning essentially have the money in the bank before we have to undertake each important milestone. The most significant money will be the construction money, obviously, but there are some significant dollars before that time in both the design and in the bidding. Next slide, please. Brief overview of where we are on the lease. So we have been in direct communication with representatives of the T, and we have been working with a negotiator on behalf of the T who is an outside consultant, much like I'm an outside consultant for the town. My marching orders and approvals ultimately need to get approval from the Selectmen and town meeting. In parallel to that, the consultant for the T is negotiating with me constructively and in good faith, but ultimately he needs to get sign-off from the T as to any changes to the standard form of realty of trail lease. So the starting position that everyone needs to understand is the only official document is the approved form of lease from the T. Anything else that we get by negotiation is not final until we get the approval from the MBTA and the document is signed. Okay? So what we're doing is our best to try to work constructively with a consultant who's doing the same with us to come up with a document we think and hope will be approvable by both the town on the one hand and the MBTA on the other, but we have to wait for the ultimate process to play out. Okay? I have a table that I'll put up later in the discussion to show you the complexity of what we've been dealing with and some of the potential changes to the lease. But for the moment, I just wanted to highlight what I call a chicken and egg issue, and that is this. In order to design the project, we need to get access to the site. To get access to the site, we need a document that gives us permission to do that. We can't sign the lease yet because we don't have the money in the bank, so we have to think about how we can get on the site, design it, get the ultimate dollar signs flushed out through this process without committing the town irrevocably to the lease. Okay? And we've talked, I've talked specifically with the MBTA's consultant about this issue. He understands it. I've proposed various alternatives. Again, sorry about the voice. One idea was, his idea, which is that we use the standard form of MBTA license agreement that allows us access to the site. You cannot do testing on the site, but you can survey and design, perhaps cut the brush so that you can do a survey that is accurate and, you know, the instruments are not surveyed around, you know, saplings or whatever. But essentially, go on, do what you need to do to design the trail, but not yet sign on to the lease. Okay? That's his proposal, is to cut this, not this chicken and egg problem in terms of what comes first and so on. I talked about another idea. I did not get a warm and fuzzy from him, but it is an idea, and that would be to sign a lease with contingencies essentially like you would in a private transaction where you're buying a house and have a financing contingency, or you're doing a commercial development and you have a due diligence and financing contingency, that sort of thing, and have a period of time that's reasonable to do that. There are pluses and minuses to that approach, but at the moment, where he's coming from is he thinks the T is more comfortable with the license rather than a contingency. Doesn't mean it's a dead issue, but it's one that it's, you know, still under discussion. Okay? Obviously, you know, various people would like to see this lease signed sooner. Others might prefer never to see it signed at all, but in this process, we're trying to find the right lease at the right time with the right funding and the right protections. Okay? Some of those issues are still up in air. Next slide, please. I mentioned due diligence. It's complicated, and there's a variety of different steps. If you're buying a house or, you know, leasing something where you're going to build a suit, as it were, ordinarily, you might do a title search of the title that complies with all title standards and so on. Here, you've got miles and miles and miles of a corridor that was created well over 100 years ago, and you have a huge task if you wanted to do a full title search of each and every parcel that makes up that right-of-way. It's not typically done by towns. What's typically done is a sort of iterative approach where during the design process, you identify whether there are any issues or problem areas that come to your attention, and you focus in on those areas with your title review so that you're sort of getting the best bang for the buck, getting the best diligence you can in a way that is realistic and makes sense under the circumstances. We've talked to folks from Beals about that. They believe that's a sound approach to the problem, and it's one that I've used with several other towns that you may or may not think of as your peers, but there are other towns that we represent like Concord and Lexington and Acton and so on, where we've looked at title with those kinds of approaches. I think Sherburne was also one of those. The next issue on the title side of the due diligence is this so-called abandonment issue. You may or may not be familiar that the SJC came up with a case last year that helped to explain what is meant by the legal term abandonment in the context of a rail trail. It's called Marie versus the DCR. But essentially, what the case said, and this is just paraphrasing, lay kind of summary of it, that it has to be a legal abandonment, not just, you know, somebody says it's abandoned or it's not used anymore for a train, therefore it must be abandoned. No, it has to be a legal form of abandonment. And essentially, where you look is at federal agencies that are and were in the business of controlling, you know, transportation. So it used to be ICC, now it's the STB, but there are federal agencies where you can try to go and get the answer to the question as it been abandoned. And we've been asked, a firm has been asked to contact the STB and try to find the answer, definitive answer there if we can. Keep in mind, it's proving negative. The answer might come back, well, we haven't found anything. We don't think it is, but, you know, just want you to know what the level of answer you may get in response to that inquiry. Okay? In the lease, we've tried to build in a certain kind of protection. It's an open issue with the T and the consultant whether or not it's going to contain anything on abandonment, but we are conscious of the issue and trying to come up with a sensible way of addressing it. In terms of environmental insurance, we got a very qualified environment, environmental insurance broker by the name of Carl Tuitt, who's been in the industry and knows his way around 21E, and I've worked with over time in projects involving rail trails. He was at AIG at the time that the environmental insurance statute was written and the program was invented to try to make environmental insurance a way of avoiding the requirement from the MBTA and others that a town must identify. And so he's been around from the beginning of this, as have I, and so he's now in private practice in his own brokerage. And I went to him, and I said, "Look, AIG is no longer writing policies of environmental insurance. What can you do for us? What can you get for us?" He went and he got four quotes from A and A plus insurance companies that are significant quotes spelling out what they're willing to do to quote on environmental insurance. So we know the price, the terms, the coverage, the exclusions, et cetera. If you want, he's happy to come to the board and put you to sleep describing all this to you. But long story short, the coverage complies with the statute in terms of $3 million per innocent and in the aggregate, a deductible of $50,000, the term of five years. And it has coverage of various types that I'll go into in a moment, with premiums that range, quote, from $21,000 to $39,000. And then there are tweaks to that. If it were to be sort of quoted in installments so that your installings, sort of phase one first and then phase two, phase three, the quotes would go up if you're dividing it up into those kind of installments. But, you know, essentially, for somewhere between $21,000 and whatever, $60,000, you can buy a good policy in environmental insurance that will provide affirmative coverage for certain types of risks, such as PI and PD, bodily injury, property damage risks, both on the site and off the site arising from environmental risks associated with the property. What is not covered, it's a definite no in one and a, what I'm saying is really a no in the other, is onsite cleanup of pre-existing environmental problems. Okay? One of them has simply said, "No, that's the lowest bidder." Another one has said, "Not really," meaning, "We're going to exclude A, B, C, D. Read, we're going to exclude what we think is there because it's a railroad corridor, and if there are surprises and nobody knows about it, then there's coverage." So, for example, if there are PAA stations and so on, those are all addressed by the BMP and the DEP process for laying out a rail trail. But if there is some unknown contaminant that's not expected to be there, maybe it's whatever, some DCE in the groundwater, you might have some coverage. Okay? But the way you should think of it, the way I would advise the town to think of it, is you do not have insurance to clean up problems that already exist out there. Okay? Think of it this way: How many insurance companies would sell you a policy, a health insurance policy for a broken arm when you're already in the sling? Okay? They just, they underwrite risks, not more than that. Okay? In terms of the BRAC subsidy, there is no more BRAC subsidy. There's no funding for it. So the folks from the Friends understand that 50% of the premium is not going to be paid by the subsidy. But the good news is with competition, the premiums are lower than I and we, I think, expecting that they might be. Okay? So I think there's some good news and bad news rode into the money. The policy gets bound ordinarily when the lease is signed. The idea is you want the policy in place from the moment you sign on to the risk, meaning the lease, through the completion of construction in the five-year term of the policy is designed to get you there and then some. Okay? The idea being that if there are problems, they're going to be known during the construction, dealt with during the construction, and then you've got a period of time to make sure that risks don't come back to bite you and the policy is in effect during that time period. And in return for that, the environmental insurance, environmental indemnity requirements in the lease are essentially trumped by the policy. The corollary to the fact that you bind it when you sign the lease is that if there is a gap in time between now and then, the quotes may change. So I'm not, I don't think they're going to disappear, but, you know, coverage might be tweaked, price might be tweaked, et cetera, between now and then. But there's basically good news on the environmental insurance front. Next slide, please. So on the design phase, I've met with Beals, and I reviewed the standard phases of a design that would be required if this were a federally funded project done by Maston. Okay? And there are whatever, seven or eight phases of the design. But this is a privately funded town project, and he believes that he can essentially do the survey and then go to the 85% design, which is basically the permitting plan. Okay? Now, MBTA needs to approve the plans, so they need to be kept in the loop along the way so they're not surprised and say, "Oops, this isn't what we thought we were getting. Go back and start at the 10% phase." Okay? But that's communication during the design phase and keeping them apprised of what's going on in the design as it is evolving. The process, the survey and design and permitting process obviously is going to involve both outreach to neighbors along the trail path on the one hand and formal public hearings with the con shop, common shop, et cetera, on the other. Once you're through the permitting, assuming you have your approvals, those will come with conditions. The conditions will be incorporated into the plans. The plans will be revised to the necessary to address issues that have been freshly flushed out during the process, and ultimately, you get to a 100% design. Okay? That is the plan that gets put out in the next phase. And the final plan that happens is ever is built, there is an as-built plan that's required under the lease, gets filed with the T, and gets generated based on what's actually been built. And they will go back and make sure that it's reasonably consistent with what they've been approved. Next slide, please. So now we get to the environmental impermeable issues. So you've heard a lot about environmental over time. I'm not going to revisit it other than to say that you do have the DEP, BMP, the best management practice. It was written expressly for rail trails, and it's designed to deal with what you would ordinarily expect to find within the corridor of the rail trail, just by virtue of the fact that it used to be a railroad with crease ties and so on down the tracks. There have been in other towns elevated areas of contamination that were identified, and they're typically associated with things like a deterrentable or a, I don't know, certain kinds of switching apparatus or transformers or whatever. They're also often associated with abiding lane uses, industrial and so on, where stuff came from there onto the tracks, or there were sightings on the tracks for, you know, tank cars to offload chemicals or whatever. Generally speaking, you don't have what I would call those big-ticket items along this corridor, at least according to the feasibility study. But if any issues are identified, they're going to be identified in the design phase of the project, and then ultimately, they would need to be quantified as part of what needs to be done. And then the Friends would have to understand that that would be part of the cost of making this trail a reality. The catch always with the MBTA is you cannot test until you sign a lease, and so we're working with qualitative information, more than quantitative information, until that step were to happen. In terms of permits and approvals, I went through permitting packages from other rail trails. trails and identified a variety of different permits that have been required for other rail trails in different towns for different reasons. And I put the list in front of Beals and I said, "Can you cross any of these off the list?" Meaning, are they not required here? Conversely, are there things that are not on this list that are potentially required here? The good news is, he kept crossing things off the list. There were about five different permits that have been involved in other towns because of their locations and environmental, you know, rivers or this, that, or the other thing that are being crossed or whatever, parkland that's being used, et cetera, et cetera, that's not involved here, okay? The main permits that you're down to is checking the MEEB box, meaning, he thinks it's not going to be required at all because you don't trigger the thresholds, but you must verify that. If it is required, he thinks it's going to be an ENF, which means a form that you file to say, "Here's what we're going to do, we don't need a full-fledged environmental impact report." And then the Secretary of the Environmental Affairs Office would or would not agree with that. They have agreed with that in other towns where the ENF was required and that happened, for example, where multiple towns were building the same project at the same time as one continuous kind of a project, okay? So he thinks it's either not going to be required or if it is, it's filing a form, getting the sign off, okay? That's good news in terms of timing and construction because it means that the types of impacts that are affected here are not the kind of impacts that trigger that kind of full-fledged review process. You will however have a specific permitting and the most significant is the Dover Conservation Commission where you have to get wetlands approval for various reasons. You are crossing or within the regulated distance of various wetland resources and you have to go to the commission and get the sign off of the commission or a superseding order of DEP. There are other, what I would call, ordinary construction kind of stuff that you have to do, like stormwater plans and so on, the National Natural Heritage Program and so on, making sure that you don't have issues that are problematic in those areas, but he believes that those are ones that are not, you know, showstoppers in this project. In terms of other potential reviews that might come to pass, obviously you need ADA compliance of the trail. You need a service that one can get down with a wheelchair chair. You need to be able to be friendly to all of those kinds of users of the trail who it is being designed for. And obviously the designers know what they need to do and will be designing to those standards. It is possible that MHC, Mass Historic, might have to get involved if certain things come to the pass. So let's say you're taking some dirt here and moving it there to level out the ground and in doing so you find an artifact that appears to be Native American, okay? That's something that needs to be dealt with. It's not necessarily anticipated because this is all previously disturbed area. A railroad was built in this area, this palace, this ties, there's, you know, not expected to be that kind of stuff, however, it's not beyond the possibility that there might be and you simply have to be aware of it and act responsibly if that comes to pass, okay? Number six, please, the next one. So there are some existing rights in the right-of-way corridor other than what's going to become the lease if it's approved. So there is a gas company transmission line that crosses the corridor. I understand that there is a transcontinental phone line. People used to have telephones. There is a line out there that goes across the country for that purpose. It's not, these are not expected to be issues in any way, shape or form, but obviously you need to do text tape and make sure you're not going to hit anything or interfere with anything. And we are also supposed to be getting under the lease from MBTA, a list of any other kind of users that they have authorized out there that are pre-existing, we need to know about, we need to respect their rights, we need to make sure they don't interfere in any way with what the project is and vice versa. So that's just something they've committed to get us, you know, along the way in this Number seven on the same slide, let me just pause. I'm tempted to say, does anybody want to guess from the time we start that process, the money's in the bank and we say to Beals, "Go ahead and start the design until what we've just done," anybody want to guess around number of months that that might take?
Is that years or months, Mr. Carter?
It is both. It is, it's roughly, no guarantees, but it's roughly twelve months, okay? Everything obviously has to fall into place for that to happen in that timeframe, MBTA has to peruse the plans, permits need to get approved, et cetera, et cetera, but it's, you know, could be less, could be more, but roughly a twelve-month timeline for that process. So if you're a proponent and you think, "Now meeting's going to vote and this summer we're going to be out on the rail trail," that's not going to happen, okay? Turning to the next stage of the process, we're now to the sort of bidding stage. Now, this is what you can think of as the big ticket item for the raising of the money because in order to go out to bid, the town needs to know, needs to have the money in the bank, that it's sufficient to cover the estimated cost of the construction. And that's not the estimate from the feasibility study, that's the estimate now that the design plans have been done and it's being, getting ready to put out to bid. So they are the hundred percent plans and an engineer's estimate of what it's going to cost. That number needs to be published in the central register and you need to be able to fund that number, okay? The friends understand that. The, it's a public works project, goes out to bid, construction companies get the bid on it and you're in the world of approving the most eligible, responsible bidder for the project, okay? You don't know where that's going to come in until the bids are open and fully evaluated by presumably a committee and a procurement process, but then you know what the likely cost of construction is going to be. If there is a delta between what is already in the bank and let's say the bids are higher than what you thought they were going to be, including the contingency, then that needs to be funded before the town can sign a construction contract, okay? That process itself takes a number of months. The estimate is roughly four, perhaps more depending on complexities, but, you know, that number of months to develop, go to bid, get the bids, evaluate them and be in a position to understand where you are in that process, okay? Obviously in parallel to all this, the friends are going to be raising money. If it's all in the bank and it's sufficient, then there's not an additional delay, but if more needs to be raised, that needs to get built into the timeline, okay? Then you get to the construction phase and it's essentially what it sounds like, it's equipment going down what is now a line, taking out some stuff that's there, laying down the new trail and making it comply with all requirements of the plans, ADA and so The construction timeline is less than the total of the permitting, design and bidding timeline, but when you add it all together, you're looking at again roughly, don't come back, you know, and say, "You said," I'm saying roughly a two-year timeline to get the job done, okay? When you add together the steps that I'm describing for you, you know, obviously there can be curveballs along the way if you do hit that, you know, set of, you know, getting artifacts and you have to stop and do a process and get that all taken care of before you can continue, that adds time, it adds money, it adds change orders, et cetera. So this is essentially predicting today as best we can what is going to happen in this very complicated project as it unfolds. Once it is built, then of course it has to be maintained and kept up over time and you're looking at what is ultimately, you know, potentially a ninety-nine-year project and obviously there's going to have to be various maintenance, annual, periodic and sort of rehabilitative maintenance over time. And so we've been talking about the idea of how to fund that and I'm hoping that we can have a plan that's in the MOU and an expectation that this is what is the idea is how that's going to happen over time, okay? So that is a summary of the process. I don't share if you want, I can either pause and take questions on the process or turn to the lease and sort of do all of my presentation.
I think there's one question on the process.
I have two specific questions.
Yes.
One is that you referenced Murray versus DCR just recently. You also, two and a half years ago, wrote an opinion relative to Ray versus U.S. The concern I have is that when this first came for the town, a number of others made claim that it was their belief that the line there was in fact an easement, which of course goes to the heart of the question of Ray. Are you still of the mind that your opinion that you presented two and a half years ago is correct relative to Massachusetts or you feel that there may have been a change given Murray versus DCR? So that's one question.
Can we, can I pause and try to answer that question? I'm always confident that my opinions are correct, however, I don't remember exactly what I said.
You have that in common with Mr. Carter.
Two and a half years ago. There are a number of cases that are involved in this area. Rowley case from the SJC several years ago was an abandonment type of case under the derelict fee statute, the case that you, you know, reference. The latest case from the SJC, it is a complicated area, okay? And we are not to the end of the evaluation of where things stand with respect to, A, what the TE is willing to do to stand behind its own title on the one hand and B, what options this town has and C, what risk, if any, exists that there has been abandonment.
My concern, and I'm a proponent of Rowley, I'm a supporter of the line, my concern is that there were substantial claims made, so here's the product there for the, that was an easement which had been abandoned. So this, I think this is a matter that has to be worked out a little bit better as we go forward.
So I haven't written up the evaluation, the summary of the 2016 case yet. It is an SJC case, it deals specifically with the question of abandonment in this context and if I remember it correctly, it essentially says that you're dealing with formal, legal kind of abandonment, which you can discover by going to the appropriate agencies and finding out. It's not necessarily use of the word abandoned in a vote or a document or whatever. So for example, if you go back to the timeframe when the MBTA was voting to approve the trail in the three towns, it authorized a lease with a vote and the word abandoned shows up in the vote, but that doesn't mean that it is lawfully abandoned.
I realize that that's the point. The other question we have is when you come to the construction, given that we're outside the one-twenty-eight area, do you feel that any construction bids would not have to be according to prevailing wage?
I don't feel that myself right now, but that's.
Would the prevailing wage?
That is my current thinking just because the default is always in a public works project, think prevailing wages, but I'm not the guy that does, or the woman in this case, that does the public work, bidding work in the office. So I would check with Dina and obviously others in the office have a lot of experience in this area, but in terms of the assumption, when you're dealing with a public works project, by a town on land that is under ownership slash easement of the TE, think prevailing wage, okay?
So why don't we move forward and do a very high-level.
Thank you, yes. Okay, the other document, please. If you hated the last one, you're going to really hate this one because there's a lot of text here and so I want to give the sort of gestalt of the document, okay? This is a table that I put together to summarize the progress of the negotiation with the consultant, okay? So if you start sort of off the table to the left, it's the pre-existing lease with no changes, okay? The first column is just the section number of the lease, the next is generally the issue that's being talked about, but the first big column is the set of changes that I asked for to the standard document. So this is ten-point font and it's a seven-page table, okay? So there was a seven-page set of rows of the table that I asked for changes to the lease, okay? I was asking for a lot, but at the same time, I was trying not to overreach because my experience is if you ask for too much over there, you get nothing, okay? So I was trying to push and push, but not queer the eel, okay? Pardon the verb. So in this set of rows and this subsequent pages are everything that I asked for in the first redline draft that I gave them, what they came back with to the consultant is in the next row, if it's white, if there's nothing there, it means they did not push back on what I asked for, okay? So he's not saying it will definitely be approved, but I'm reading the signals that he thinks it's a reasonable ask and, you know, it's language that he's not balking at, okay? If you do see text in the row or in that column, what it means is, he has. If you do see text in the row or in that column, what it means is he has either rejected it out of hand or rejected it in a way that seemed final, but maybe there was a little more room. Okay? So just on this one page alone, the next column is, I go back to him and say, "He said no, but can we do this? Can we do something else?" Et cetera. Okay? And then he comes back in the next row, and it says, "No means no," or "I don't have the ability to say yes. This particular issue must be approved at either the environmental department or the general counsel's office or whatever it is." Okay? He can't even give a signal as to what might be acceptable. Okay? And then the last column is essentially reminders for me as to what needs to be done or what the open issues are. So nobody can read any of this. Okay? But it's going to be up on the website. It's going to be able to be looked at. But I'd like to sort of summarize perhaps some of the, you know, unusual in the context of Dover is different, or, you know, important issues that we asked for and maybe did or did not get, or they're still open, just to give you a flavor of the discussion. Okay? So on the first page, for example, we've built into this particular lease two things that are not in other leases. One is dividing up the 99-year term into four installments, 25 years, 25 years, 25 years, and 24 years, and they are the town's option. Okay? So if it's working out, great, it automatically renews and goes forward. But it gives you the ability, you and your children, the ability, 25 years from now, 50 years from now, 75 years from now, to sunset this if it hasn't worked out in the way people thought and hoped. Okay? We also built in sort of the leased premises, meaning that which will be under lease from day one, and then optional lease premises. You know, my first passited, that which is in the document, that which I hope is going to change based on my meeting with Bill, Bill's as recently as yesterday. He's going to provide me a lease exhibit showing the lease area and then the optional area. So the lease area is essentially from close to the Midfield Town Line, Hunt Street, I believe the name of the street is, to the center of town, across to the DBW garage. So there's parking in the center of town, et cetera, and a rail trail that would go almost all the way to, you know, Midfield. But the last junk right up to the town line is sort of the road to nowhere unless it's built on the other side of the town line. If it is somewhere, it can be added in to the lease at the town's option and finished out on that end. The draft talked about it from town line to the town center, so it needs to be tweaked to coincide with the lease exhibit, which is what these bills will be developing. At the other end, from the town center toward Needham, that's in there as an option rather than necessarily leased premises from day one, so the town gets to decide what it wants to do in this score. Okay? Or thoroughly, you just see coast-to-coast kind of, the lease is the whole corridor from point A to point B, period. But we've tried to give more of a community flavor to this, to give you some options that other communities don't necessarily have. He hasn't come back and said no to any of that. It hasn't changed in the draft so far. I'll tweak it when I get the lease exhibit, let him know how I tweaked it. But I'm expecting that this kind of idea is reasonable and, you know, may fly forward. So that's an example of one where it's not controversial for the T, I don't think, and I'm hoping it's going to be approved. I mentioned there are several pre-existing rights that already exist in the corridor, others we don't know about yet. I've written into several sections of the lease, language that essentially says the town is not responsible for assuming a risk with respect to indemnifying about any of these other folks that are out there. So if there's some kind of a, you know, explosion of the gas main, God forbid, the town is not on the hook for that under the, under the lease. That's on the responsible party for that kind of a, an event. Now, that doesn't mean, I mean, this is America. Anybody can sue anybody for anything, anytime, but, you know, with that footnote, you know, the lease is, has terms that are being, we're asking for changes to help further protect the town on these issues and was already in the, in the document. Again, he rejected elements of that when I was sort of putting risks off onto the MBTA necessarily, but not rejecting the concept that the town is not taking on those risks. Okay? On the next page of this same table, please, the top line talks about the indemnification provision. You probably know that the standard lease has in it a very onerous indemnification provision. And what I tried to do is have our cake and eat it too, essentially to say, "We're going to get environmental insurance, so why don't we just take that out of the lease altogether? Forget it ever happened." Okay? Or if it has to stay in there, why don't you make the following kind of changes? Okay? How do you spell no? Those requests came back as a definite no. Okay? So I tried in a couple of different ways, I was not successful, to get it out of the document completely. So you're relying on environmental insurance for protection, but I was able to massage other language in the, in the lease to address, for example, environmental. And if it stays in, it needs to be reviewed by other environmental people, but if it stays in, it's important language that's not in there now. What it essentially says is that the following paragraph in the lease is subject to all of the defenses that the town has under a variety of different statutes. Okay? So we're not waiving any defenses by signing on to the lease, quite the contrary. We're expressly saying we're not waiving any defenses. If I get the language, I think it's better than not having it. If we don't have it, we argue that we never raised, waived it. It's not in there as a waiver, but I'm asking for more. Okay? So that's just an example of several that where I've been asking for, for stuff over and above. The, the action item on the indemnity is buy the environmental insurance from day one of the lease. There's a variety of other changes that I won't go through because everybody would fall asleep. If you go two pages along to page four, starts at the top 9.1. Yep. So the second row talks about this abandonment issue is on the list. There was language I asked for. He said no. I asked for other language. He said he doesn't think it's going to be approved in the most recent draft that I want to go back to him with. I'm trying to keep specific language on this particular issue in the document, again, to try to get belt and suspenders to the extent I can. Okay? But I would say it's an open issue because he has expressly said, "I cannot give you any kind of comfort on this, and I don't think it's going to be approved." Okay? But that doesn't mean it's not reasonable to ask for, and let's see if we can get it. There's another issue that's open. Let's see if I can put my finger on it. It essentially has to do with whether or not we can use an AUL, an activity and use limitation, in the event that we are called upon to do any kind of remediation under the lease. And the sort of progression was, I asked for good language for, you know, the anti-remediation language, and also I asked for a provision that said, "If we have to remediate it, we can use an AUL." And this is on page two, so I'm sorry, back two pages. It is on that same 6.2 line item. Can we use an AUL? He said, he took it out the first time around. I went back and said, "You know, everybody uses it, it's done all the time. Why can't we use it here?" His response was, "I understand why you're asking for it. It's a reasonable ask. I can't say yes. It has, it must go through the environmental department." So this is another one where I think it's an open issue based on where we are, and I'd like to keep asking. It might ultimately be no, but no harm in asking. I'm sorry, now to page four, please. The bottom of page four is another open issue here, the last row on the table, and this one has to do with the premises at termination. MBTA has an option in their standard lease that essentially says, "When the lease is over or it's terminated early by the MBTA, under the rights that they have, the town must restore the pond premises, the grade to what it was before we altered it by constructing the rail trail." I think, A, that's going to cost money, and B, that's crazy. Okay? So I'm asking to have that not an option that they can exercise, but rather that that is a, you know, out of the lease entirely, that we simply do not have to do that in the future. Because when you think about it, right now, it's a pretty level rail trail corridor. It's going to end up being a pretty level bike path or rail trail if and when the lease expires or it's taken back by the T to do another transportation project. It's going to be roughly what it was before, but we don't have to invest money to make it what it was before. Okay? So this is an ask, and he's said, "Currently, I don't think the T is going to agree to it, but once again, it's one where I'd like to ask one more time before the risk starts and I'm out." Okay? So this is a flavor of the discussion. There's a lot of fine print here. Okay? It's complicated. I, again, am trying to ask for reasonable things in hopes of getting progress rather than asking for things that are just going to come back no and end up back with the paper that is the starting point paper. Okay? Two issues. One is just everyone needs to keep in mind, at the end of this process, it is possible that the MBTA will say, "Thank you for the hard work. We appreciate all you've done. We're sorry, we can't make these changes. We need to go with our standard form. It's a programmatic requirement, and, you know, we can fill in the blanks, we can do a couple of tweaks kind of things to it, but we can't make the kind of substantive changes you've asked for." So that's a possibility. Okay? The other is the sort of timing element of this. The timing element is that it's taken a while with the T's consultant to get to where we are. And as you all know, we're pretty close to town meeting, and we're certainly close to the March meeting, the information session. Okay? So I would like to get instructions from the board after you've had sufficient time to review this, because they're getting briefed in real time on these issues. Essentially, have I done enough? Have I done what I was charged with doing? Have I gone forward and tried to negotiate successfully a lease for the town on the rail trail such that I can say to the consultant, "This is the package that the town wants you to ask the MBTA to approve." So we can try to get through that process and have some hope of getting something from the T, you know, between now and town meeting. Obviously, that's not going to happen tonight. It's unreasonable to even think that that is a possibility. But I would commend you to think about this sooner than later and get it on your agenda and, and decide. Okay? I've, you know, worked a number of these projects. I'm asking for more than other towns have gotten. Some of it is consistent with what I got for other towns from Mastot, which is the parent company of MBTA, but it's a different independent authority at the MBTA, and it's not the same drummer. Okay? And the lawyer that I got concessions from at Mastot has retired, so, you know, there's some change of personnel. But I've tried to be thorough, I've tried to be reasonable, I've tried to be acting in the town's best interest, and I'm hoping that you can look through it and see whether or not you agree. And if you have any questions, invite me back out, I'll work through them. Let's get this at the appropriate time with the appropriate thorough thought that this board gives to things to the next step. Okay? The only two other things are show and tells. So in your package is the red line of the lease. This is the cumulative red line that incorporates sort of every change that I've asked for and/or that's opened and not been rejected by the T. Okay? So it's kind of where we are, including the open issues, without MBTA approval, obviously, but where I think I am in my discussion with the consultant. Okay? The table summarizes it in a way that I hope gives it more meaning, but the actual red lines compare it to the starting point. It's not like the most recent red line is the cumulative red line, but only of the changes that might still be on the table, not the ones that have been left on the cutting room floor. Okay? The other show and tell, I didn't even bother to have him put it up there, because you think that's bad, and this one's even worse. This is the spreadsheet on the four quotes that we got from the environmental insurance. And as you can imagine, there are a lot of details that have been summarized in short time by the broker in terms of what's out there. And again, if you wanted him to come out, he's happy to come and answer your questions. So with that, that's my presentation. Thank you all for your patience. Hopefully, you were able to hear me, and I hope this has been informative.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Rob Schlecker from 39 Lees Drive. I'm sorry to hear that your voice made it difficult for some of us here, I would imagine, especially for people maybe trying to see this cover and the front appear, obviously didn't help either. And I'm sort of a simple person, so I have three simple questions. First one is, based upon where you work and where you are, with the town and exposure of the Board of Selective Science, the lease has been reviewed?
Exposure to what? I mean...
With a sense of financial or legal liability?
So the answer is a qualified yes. Qualified in the sense that whenever you sign... Qualified in the sense that whenever you sign a binding legal document, like a lease, you commit to legal obligations, you have potential risks and liabilities under the document. So, if you sign, if the town authorizes and the selectmen sign on to a lease, yes, it is a binding legal document. The idea is that the money that is necessary to fund the project will be in the bank from private donations based on engineering estimates and ultimately, construction cost bids as to what is required, and...
But there is exposure to that, if you sign?
No. What I'm saying is that it is being, this transaction is being structured in a way so that the money is in the bank to satisfy the obligations that go with the design, the permitting, the bidding, the construction. And we have to think about how to address O and M going into the future, because that's a long-term issue.
But what about the environmental liability?
Right. So there was a long memo that I wrote a year or two ago on the environmental question, and once again, I stand behind it. But the bottom line is that the environmental situation on a rail trail is fairly well-understood to the point where DEP has come out with a BMP, a Best Management Practice, that essentially takes these kinds of projects out of the MCP, the, you know, Form Book of Environmental Regulations, and streamlines the project to do it in a certain way, comply with the BMP, and that takes care of the issue.
But I think I did hear earlier...
Right, which I'm about to repeat.
When you discuss insurance policies, there's an awful lot of exclusions.
Right. So there's two parts to the issue. One is that the BMPs do not take care of problems that might be a special problem. So if in the design, you discover that there was a station, and the station had an underground tank, and it was emptied out, but there's some spills, you know, in the vicinity of the tank, no, no, you know, big leaking underground storage tank, but something that really has to be dug up and moved out. Okay? That would be a risk. It's one that's not covered by the BMP, and there's going to be things much more complicated than that risk. In another town, it was next door to a formula, former tannery. The tannery had treated various chemicals, stuff, and some of it got into the environment, and some of it made its way over to the rail trail. So the town needed to close out that issue under the MCP within the trail right away, because it was a different kind of issue. So there are all sorts of, of course, what ifs. What if the environmental law changes tomorrow? I mean, all right, four years from now, what if it gets more strict four years from now?
If it changed, okay, it's tighter today than it was...
Ralph, thanks for your question. I think at this point, let's move on to some other questions. I have the, I think we have the sense of where you're going with this. I think your question's a good one. I think the form of liability, the contingent liability, the covered liability, the uncarved liability, are questions we'll probably have a whole lot of time to look at. As a board, I don't think the board would enter into any type of lease at any point in time with exposure that we knew to be relevant and unsecure. So the point, let me finish. The point is, you have, we have the ability to look through these in detail, we have the ability to go to professionals, we have the ability to go to our council for their opinion. We don't have the ability to give you a blanket answer on any question of liability at any point in time. And we just don't have the ability to do that. We don't have insurance companies that would give you that blanket protection at any point in time. We will try to the best of our ability to always do what's in the best interest of the town as a board, as is our job. So we could, I deeply appreciate your question. I don't think at this point in time, we could answer it sufficiently for you, or for me, or for the board at this point, but we're going to do the best we can possibly do to come back with that answer. Is that a fair summary?
You said it better than I did, thank you.
I'm sorry?
You said it better than I did, thank you.
You know, the purpose of this evening is not to debate the merits of what we presented to you. No, please let me finish. The purpose of this evening is to provide the town with the information that we've been able to assemble to date. We will put all this information on the website for everybody to review, but I think it's really important that everybody understand the limits that we have with respect to negotiating certain items in the lease. We start from a lease, and there's very little wiggle room. The environmental policies are what they are. There is no risk in the world that you can say is never, ever, ever going to happen. But we, as a board, will make sure that we are able to negotiate the best possibilities for the town over. And then at town meeting, it is up to the town to decide as to whether or not they would like to accept the terms that we've been able to negotiate. That was our charge, and that's what we plan to do.
Madam Chair, if I may, what I think I'm hearing is that you said you have very little wiggle room. Okay? My next question is going to be, can we try harder to push back?
We have tried as hard as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? I wondered, Attorney Anderson, thank you so very much for all that you have done, and I think you bring a very interesting question to us about whether or not this is enough to move forward with this. And I was trying to summarize for myself, and maybe Mr. Schlinker, this might help as well, to try to summarize, as far as you have gotten in these negotiations, what are the substantial changes that you've been able to get? And if I understand, and I will just, I see five, that you have, thus far, the TE has not rejected the notion that we divide the lease into a partial lease into two pieces. Thus far, they have not rejected the 25-year piece, so that we might be able to say to the townspeople, instead of a 99-year liability, we really are talking about a 25-year liability? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay? Number three, that the DEP does have best management practices to address normal problems.
Correct.
That takes it out of the normal, the 6.1, the issues of the 21E.
Correct.
Okay? Number four, that there is no protection in an insurance policy that against pre-existing conditions.
With one caveat.
Okay.
On-site, pre-existing conditions are not covered.
The ones that we know of, the ones we would anticipate.
Right. But off-site, pre-existing conditions alleged to have come from the onsite problem is covered.
That makes sense, through the construction phase.
Right.
And also, if it were something, as you said, something totally out of the blue that no one would expect, that the insurance, the policy might cover us in that situation.
Might is the operative word.
Might. And lastly, it looks as though you pushed at the MBTA about our not being, the town's not being responsible for restoring the condition of the rail trail back to the way it was prior to our doing the work.
Correct.
That you got nowhere, that the MBTA said, that's not going to fly.
I have not given up on that issue yet. Because I, pick a pen, I look at all the words, and he said, currently, I don't think this is going to be...
Okay, currently, so that the key...
Right. So I'm seeing if the adverb means something, we'll see.
Okay. So have I missed a main point?
Well, I wish I had the foresight to do exactly what you've done and summarize the main points, but I think you've hit on several of the main points.
And I believe to build on that, while tonight is not the only night for us to do this, that kind of presentation is going to be what we want to bring to the town meeting, where we can identify how far you have gotten, that you feel we are where we are, and that here are some of the significant changes that we, through the negotiations that you've been able to do with the team, where we have seen some change, some movement. Now, granted, I understand that the MBTA at the very last minute could go, you know what, cool, but it's not going to fly for us, and nix the whole thing. But what we're charged with doing, and I'm building on what Mrs. Hunter was saying, is that we want to bring back to the townspeople these terms. So these changes are, to my way of thinking, the best way for us to get our arms around exactly what you're doing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Could I ask, Andres Riquelme? Mr. Anderson, thanks for the overview. I just had a question. I'm not an attorney, I just want to make sure I understand it. In terms of the liability or indemnification associated with the contract and insurance, is insurance, I believe, a five-year period associated with it, with $4 million coverage per incident, $50,000 deductible per incident? What happens after the five years when that policy expires? And for how long does the town Dover incur the liability, and does the MBTA remain identified after the indemnity period?
So that's a very good question. Go back before there was a statute on environmental insurance. The MBTA required an indemnity. You could sign it or not. If you signed it, you could go forward. If you don't sign it, you won't go forward, they won't sign a lease. Towns were stuck. Do we sign it? Take the risk? Or do we give up the project? The idea came about, PM Riza was in the legislature at the time, I worked with her and others, and we came up with this concept to build a statute that says, if you buy a policy of insurance that satisfies the easy criteria, then you cannot be required as a town to give an indemnity to the MBTA or any other, you know, board like them on which you're building your rail trail. Okay? The criteria were a five-year policy, $3 million of coverage, and $50,000 deductible. Okay? So as we read the statute, what it means is, if you buy this policy at the outset, and it's in effect as you're building the trail, the trail's then up and running, and you are out from under the indemnity. Okay? Because you bought what the statute said you're supposed to buy. That's the way the statute is supposed to work. Now, you're not a lawyer, but you've probably heard lawyers argue the opposite sides of questions, right? So someone can, of course, try to find a hole in the argument. And so one of the reasons I was pushing even further on the lease was to try to get the thing crossed out altogether, was to remove any conceivable argument somebody might come up with on the language that's in the standard document. Okay? But I'm told we have to live with language in the document, and therefore, if you want to avoid this risk, the best way to do that is to buy the environmental insurance. There is no BRAC subsidy anymore for the insurance. The statute talks about insurance that, you know, qualifies for the subsidy, but the kind of policies that we're talking about here, the PLL policy, pollution liability policies, are the types of policies that were being written under the BRAC program and that were subsidized by BRAC back in the day, when there was money in the bank to subsidize it, which there isn't anymore.
Could I ask the follow-up question, just to clarify, put in layman's terms for myself? So after the five-year period of the insurance policy, should there be an incident? Who is liable at that point in time? Is the MBTA liable, or is the town Dover liable?
So...
The follow-up to that would be, you mentioned financing, as well, so could you touch on how many incidents were suing for, in terms of the funding that was set aside ahead of each of the phases?
Okay, so the last question first, if I understand it. The three phases that the engineer would be looking at the funding for is the design phase, that's the one-year upfront phase, then the bidding phase, that's the development of the 100% design documents and putting it out to bid with the bid specs and so on, very calculated, part of the exercise. And then the third phase is the construction phase. O and M is something we need to talk about, and we need to, you know, get a meeting in the minds over, that's operation and maintenance. But essentially, you can think about four phases, and for each phase, the idea is, the money needs to be there for the phase to happen. Going back to the, what about things that happen after the insurance policy expires? The idea is that you're not automatically on the hook with IOU, meaning an indemnity agreement that says you're responsible, because the statute says if you bought the insurance, that nobody can require you to give an indemnity. Okay? If the legislature means what it says, then there is no indemnity. There is still a statute, 21E, there's still a set of regulations, the MCP, there's still the ability of people to, you know, bring lawsuits. So let's think about some possibilities. Let's say that you're doing maintenance on the trail, and you're using a piece of equipment, and you hit a rock, and it punctures the gas tank. Okay? Hypothetical, any lawyer can think about these possibilities, right? If it's a town piece of equipment and operated by a town person, and it causes a release, that town should pick up the phone and call the immersion's response team, get out there and clean it up right away before it becomes a real problem. Okay? So there's one where something could happen, the town is responsible. Okay? Let's say it's something else. I mentioned the idea of the pipeline having a problem associated with it. It could be catastrophic, but let's say it was some kind of a smaller issue, but it's caused by the pipeline, the lease is supposed to take us out of being responsible for that. Okay? There's all sorts of permutations in between those. And then you've got the operation of law, and the law builds in certain defenses. So the owner is liable for the issue. So, for example, if people say, I own up to the center line in fee, it's only in Eastman, and indeed, it's been abandoned, and there's a pre-existing environmental problem on that section of the rail trail, you own the fee, you own the problem. Okay? Over and above that is the MBTA's ownership of its right-of-way, and it has certain statutory responsibilities under that. And then we would be a less E of the T, and we would have certain responsibilities under the lease. But the statute has something that's called an eligible tenant defense, a defense to liability, if you can check off all the boxes that you did everything right that you were supposed to do along the way. And that's why you're going to hire the right consultant and engage the right contractor to do it right. Okay? So it's a complicated question. I mean, I taught advanced environmental law for many years in a law school where your moderator teaches. And it's, I spend semesters talking about these issues because they're complicated. But the good news is, on a rail trail, they're far less complicated than they are with a landfill, a super sub on site, a, you know, a gas station, et cetera. I'm sorry to go on and on, but...
That's okay. Stephen, the good news is, we don't have a semester to discuss it this evening.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir, what was your first name?
they are with a landfill, a super sub fund site, a gas station, et cetera. I'm sorry to go on and on, but...
That's okay. Stephen, the good news is, we don't have a semester to discuss it this evening.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir, what was your first name? Just ask the question. Your first name? Yes.
Andres.
Andres. Andres, thank you for your question, your follow-up, thoughtful, on point. And I think, Andres, to your point, and thank you very much for the answer, thorough, and what we're going to, and I think Ralph, it also speaks to your follow-up and to some of the questions that you asked, which, again, thank you, thoughtful, your, the intellect and the insight that you're both are bringing to us is encouraging, it's something we appreciate. We really want to give you the opportunity to ask these questions, to ask them in the way that you've done this evening, in a thoughtful, provocative, stimulating way that gives us the ability to respond to them. I think that you might agree that we could spend hours taking into consideration the what-ifs and the possibilities, they're endless. It would be a riveting course that I might not do so well in, probably why I went to business school and not law school. But for this evening, I would very much like to hear from some of the other folks, there was a couple of other hands in the room. Sir, thank you.
My name is Andres Villalobos, I've been in this process now for several years. I'd like to thank the town officials for doing this process. The town voters go forward, I can maybe just exactly what I'm about to say.
Thank you.
I agree the timing of this is very complicated.
Thank you very much.
And I think we have a lot of other things on our agenda this evening. We'll post all the site, all these items on the website, and there will be other meetings where we will discuss more of these items in detail. We will make a determination as to whether or not we want to bring the insurance broker here to discuss those policies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So moving right along, I guess the next item is a discussion regarding a citizen's petition for a non-binding public opinion advisory question for the 2017 town election, Morris. Mr. Ramsey, are you going to speak up today, the non-binding?
Sir. We received on, I believe it was Monday, a petition signed by, I think it was 14 registered voters of the town, asking the selectmen to place on the next election ballot, which would be May 15, a question, a non-binding question relative to whether or not the town would like to see a rail trail. And the language of the question, if it were put on the ballot, reads as follows. Should the town Dover lease land from the MBTA and create a recreational rail trail more or less on the old rail right-of-way in Dover, known as the Bay Colony Railroad Line? This petition was filed in accordance with the relevant state statute that allows 10 registered voters of the town to petition the board of selectmen. It is not a requirement of the Selectment Act on this petition. The selectmen have in their discretion the ability to act in affirmative or take no action or vote against it. What the citizens can do, if the selectmen have not acted within 90 days of the election, and this is the last meeting, unfortunately, it's the only meeting, that they can choose to act or not, then the recourse that the citizens have under the statute is to go out and collect the registered voter's signatures equal to 10% of the registered voters, which is about 400 plus or minus in town. If they present that petition to the selectmen timely, then the selectmen must put that on the ballot for the next election. So what's in front of the selectmen tonight is a petition requesting that they do this, they're under no obligation to do so.
But at the end of the day, if I understand it correctly, if the selectmen decide not to agree to this, the article or the warrant, the non-binding question can still appear on the ballot if the citizens aren't to get sufficient signatures.
Correct.
And I ask that you make it brief.
Absolutely, absolutely. Stay away from the what ifs. Thank you. I can't help but muse over the fact that 20 years ago, I sat in your seats and voted for the selectmen to pass your warrant petition. And one of the things I learned, among many things I learned, is that people in Dover are fiercely independent, don't like other towns telling them what they do, don't like what's on their organizations, don't like what they do. But sometimes, you know, when there's an important decision being made in process, it's very important, sometimes process, it unloads the issue. And the rail trail, as you know, was a very contentious and divisive issue last year, and it will be the same this year. So a number of residents, including myself, have signed that petition requesting, as they've just indicated, that the question be put on the ballot, which is two weeks after the town meeting. This has got nothing to do with town meetings, I think you all understand, separate petition that you put on the ballot. We know it's a non-binding sense of the community kind of thing, but we think that that sort of a question gives a more fair and accurate presentation of the sense of the town. Hardly, we feel that way, is the experience in 2013. You may recall there was an issue at that time regarding potential official interference. The town meeting, I don't believe voted on it, but there were 522 people who attended the town meeting that year. There was a ballot question, which the park and rec remission agreed ahead of time to abide by. Two weeks after the town meeting, 522 people, the total of 1,562 people voted three times the attendance at town meeting. Of the 1,562 voting, 360 voted in favor, 1,249 against, so a blank. Since the three persons on the board of selectmen will be making this decision ultimately whether to sign the lease or not, I can't imagine why you would not want to have an excellent amount of input in your deliberations to guide your decision. And also, because this issue was so contentious last year, frankly, there were some intimidation factors, some, even dirty tricks, they could use that phrase, that occurred, intimidation occurred with some families who felt that they could not go to town meeting and petition publicly because of repulsion, either against them or in some ways of their children. The dirty tricks they referred to, signs were vandalized, and the town request over the advisory. I don't know how you folks feel, but this is not Dover that I moved into 2017 years ago. I don't think it's Dover that you want to hear. The beauty of a ballot question is simply that it takes essentially all of that, the question, it's the privacy of one person, the voting booth, without intimidation or anything else going on. Listen, we know this will be non-binding, but we can basically request that you put it on the ballot in order to get a true sense of the community.
A couple of comments I'd like to make. First of all, going back to the 2013 meeting, is my recollection that the reason the park and rec fields went on the ballot was because there was certain evidence that was suggesting that it would circumvent town meeting altogether, and that's why it was on the ballot. I fundamentally, I believe that, you know, as a town, we have a democratic system, and our system is town meeting. And I ask everyone here, how many times has town meeting got it wrong? I mean, I can't think of how many times they've gotten it wrong. So I, this issue was debated extensively at town meeting. We had many people come to town meeting to voice their opinions, you know, for and against the rail trail. I agree with you, it was not, what came out at that meeting was not the Dover that we all know, but town meeting, after all, is our form of government. And I'm concerned that by having these types of non-binding votes, are we somehow undermining town meeting? If an issue is important enough for the citizens of Dover, I strongly encourage them to come to town meeting and to voice their opinions, because that's what town meeting is for.
I agree with you on all of that, I do not view it as underwhelming. I view it as supplemental information.
Well, again, this is a democracy, we're all entitled to our opinions.
Madam Chair, I tend to believe very strongly in the merits of a ballot question, just exactly as you cited, 1,500 voters, we would never get 1,500 people into the annual town meeting. If the 1,500 showed up to vote, we would not be able to accommodate them all. And I have always believed that for those very far-reaching decisions that are going to have a long-lasting impact on the community, the greater the number of voters we can draw in to weigh in on an issue, the better it is for the town of Dover. So I personally support the ballot question.
Sir?
Hi, I'm Kevin Louie, I think the town meeting is great, you could come, like you say, to explain the Dover viewpoints that you have here, but ultimately, when you may have now very long-running positions on the town vote, like financially, as well as changing the, changing way Dover is, then I think having a ballot is very important, but the town meeting is important to get all of the viewpoints, unlike, like Emma said, we have a bunch of people here who are trying to be all the time. When it comes to voting on the whole issue, that I believe to admit, if Monday causes up a ballot, rather than, you know, it's not...
Thank you.
Hi, George Schimetto, Lewis Street, and I must say, I never thought I'd be speaking as a senior citizen.
Congratulations.
But one thing about town meeting, especially with older people, as these hotly contested decisions get moving later and later in the evening, it's really tough to vote. I think it's one that has to be, that's the place to really have well-thought presentations for something this important. I think it would be really great for the senior citizens to have a chance to vote about rather than stay until 11 o'clock at night.
At 11 o'clock at night?
Yes.
I'm Kathy Ollie, I want to urge this, let me seriously consider the ballot option for this issue for the year. I also serve on the local committee, I'm speaking out as a citizen, but I can't report to myself, or experience last year, of trying to help with the conversation, help with the education, help with the debate. And I think the fact is, we didn't have last year, separate items that was an uptown vote on the rail trail, confused the conversation greatly last year, about whether or not the selectmen should be asked to pursue the options of the lease. And at the end of the day, the town voted to ask you to do that, and you've done a terrific job, so that's a presentation. But I think if what happens again at this town meeting is that we're asked to vote on the lease, and we don't have an uptown vote on the rail trail, that conversations and the debate will continue to be really, really difficult, because many times last year, we had people coming to meetings and coming to open slots and talking about what happened to the rail trail, and we were trying to direct the conversation to whether or not the selectmen should be asked to pursue the lease. And I still have a lot of difficulty with the logic of the approach that we engaged on, which is, I think that it would have made a lot more sense if we had an uptown upvote on the rail trail, and then asked you guys to do all the enormous work that is now going on with the ability or the potential ability for us to at least have been going on. So I think that it would be very clarifying if we could simply understand that people in the town, as a group, want the rail trail. And if they don't want a rail trail, then obviously, people would vote down the lease, but if they do want a rail trail, then they can focus their efforts on getting a lease as good as possible and then see anything's up.
It seems a little backwards, because right now, we're, you know, we were charged, and have spent an enormous amount of time and resources trying to negotiate the best lease, and now there's going to be a non-binding vote, and what happens? A circumstance could exist where, you know, we charged a town meeting to vote for the lease, and then we have a non-binding, and then we get the opposite outcome of a non-binding vote. Then what?
Think the ultimate decision is yours?
No, the ultimate decision is the town of Dover, and the ultimate place to make that decision, right now, is town meeting.
Miss Eng, a second. Sir?
Quick, yeah, question, preschool, actually, 15th Century. We've been listening to this, and I think George brought up a good point, that following preschool in town is kind of difficult, with people who want to go to Dover, you know, you see both sides, and I don't know if I can be a middle of it, but I know, I stand, but I agree with a ballot question, because I do feel uncomfortable. If I make too much of an argument about this, I seem like a brochure to my business man. And it's this question, I mean, I love the kids, and I want them to be safe places and safe spaces, nothing that would make me happy, seeing them, in and of the way they're comfortable to do certain things. But it has to be done by consensus, at a town meeting, you know, when it's college just isn't big enough. I think it's a very divisive issue, something that hasn't been done in a thoughtful manner, that's why the ballot question is thoughtful, because everybody can get behind it, it's nobody's shut up, no person, or you're not able to help at all, you know, what you have to do, you have to go to your school, you don't want to do that, you don't want to manage this. I think the thoughtful way to do it is not showing natural physical devices, way to handle it, thoughtful way to do it, but I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't walk, it's almost a problem, one person gets a little bit of a vote, in a town meeting, you know, even if the preschools and kids who aren't social, they don't have, they're voting for us, in a town meeting, it's social, it's just, you know, you get out of there. So both can do that, I'm sorry, I'm not that familiar with the case.
Thank you. Missy.
I have to say, I agree with Mrs. Hunter, I think that is very confusing if you provide a warrant article to be voted on in town meeting, and then in addition, having to vote afterwards, I think people don't know where to show up, which means, they say, well, we're going to vote on it afterwards on the ballot, so I don't count votes on meeting. I think the great benefit of the town meeting is that I can do that discussion, there's one of the meetings, there's following information provided, whether it's rumors or whispers, hearsay, and that, so I think the town meeting is very good, solid information, and those votes who want to be there, they may have time, they may remember last year, we had a new competitor turn out, and these people are very interested in this issue. And we had many people wanting to also go by commentary, now they have a town meeting, but in the many meetings that happened before that, and I'm sure we'll have many meetings that happen with this way. And I just think that it's very confusing to have a ballot question in addition to a town meeting at the same time, if you don't have a decent conference.
Well, also, the ballot question and the warrant article are two different items. The warrant article is to decide whether or not you want the selectmen to sign a lease. The non-binding public opinion or the ballot question is whether or not you want a rail trail. I thought that ship had sailed already.
Do you have a vote?
Well, you voted for the selectmen to negotiate a lease, and now the vote is up or down, whether or not you want to accept the terms of that lease.
I find it interesting, the town vote, if they don't sign the lease, and not want the town to vote, I think that is very unlikely. I think he will make the assumption that if you are signing the lease, you are agreeing to those terms, with the incentive going forward, otherwise, you're wasting a lot of his time.
That's true. Thank you, Valerie.
I guess my question would be, there are other things where we work, except if this happens, then that, so would it, would it be possible? this happens, then that. So would it be possible to your point, to ease the confusion?
To have a ruling on the warrant article or the release depends upon people supporting the idea of a rail trail act. So in other words, the article that is in the warrant says, if voters support, the majority of voters support the establishment of the Rail Trail Act in Dover, which should be voted on by ballot on this date and this time, is this lease an acceptable one?
I believe not, but we will explore that option with counsel. There's very little wiggle room to have with respect to the law.
And to that point, whether or not we can do as you suggest, Kathy, without a ballot question agreed to by the selectmen tonight, that language would be meaningless anyway. There would be no ballot question.
Well, I assume you have to agree to the ballot question, but I'm just trying to address the points that are on the ballot.
Sir?
So I understand the idea of having an uptown vote on the rail trail, but I think initially, more than half the world, it was a little like, versus ago, Austin Scopes and that's been over on last May, because that's a project that was enacted by a former seventy-five to go forward with that proposal. So this is making sense backwards on that box of votes at town meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Engels?
Yeah, Carol here, three and L Street. I'm just wondering procedurally, how the selectmen would deal with it if the lease were approved at town meeting, and then you got a ballot question response that said that, you know, where the majority did not want the rail trail. Like, what would the procedure be at that?
Right, it's a conundrum to me.
So, there's two parts to this. And first of all, with respect to town meeting and the fabulous job that Mr. Rupetti does at town meeting as the moderator, Jim, that's all right, we're in...
He wants something.
No, I don't. It is, town meeting is town meeting. And to all the things that have been brought up, the points, town meeting is our form of government. So, the thing that you have to focus on with this particular petition that's in front of us, is it's really a matter for us, if we take action either way, or take no action, you still have the ability to get this into a vote, a vote. You can still get, instead of getting fifteen signatures, you simply go out and get four hundred signatures. So with nine hundred people that showed up at the town meeting last year, presided by Mr. Rupetti, I think you wouldn't have a problem getting four hundred signatures. So, the question for me is to think about this in the context of what you're asking us. This petition asks us to take a step ahead of what you would need to do if we vote no or take no action at all. You would have to then get another four hundred signatures, which you can do, and that automatically goes on the ballot. So, in the context of this evening, what you're simply asking us to do is to take one step ahead of you, or to take that step for you, if you will. And I don't see how it benefits anyone for us to block that step. As your governing, as your board, as the board that represents the town, it simply seems to me that if we draw the line in the sand and say, no, it's been done, you still have the ability to do it. So I would ask you to think to the next step and the step beyond that. So, tonight, we're going to have the ability to vote, we're going to have the ability to listen to everything that you said, but it's not going to change. What we do this evening is not going to change the debate. It's going to... ma'am, I'm sorry. Sorry, go right ahead. Go ahead, no, no, go right ahead.
I'm Sam Lynn, formerly of Center Street, Illinois Paris. Just as a matter of fact, if this issue was such a hotly contested issue that we all knew about, then I would urge the town board, the selectmen, to not have item at eleven o'clock at night, that's item number seventeen or eighteen, with the kids, number of families that showed up, and senior citizens involved. Both of the people just can't sleep, so I would urge you to be a soundly thinking. I think, secondly, this issue of vote balancing, ballot or not, seems to be something that is maybe something that the town board would view in terms of bylaws, in terms of what would be the actual governance of the town that was mentioned. It's been in place long before, we're able to move it over in terms of how things are settled within the town, and it's voted upon and moved forward. So I just wonder, it seems that it just seems to be an alteration of bylaws that I'm less likely to kind of wish you'd kind of do that. Last thing, great new or everything, I appreciate your thoughts, and I just wanted to make sure I understood that you're registering comments of the business somewhere in Dover.
Yes.
I'm Mark Yuley. Thanks. I'm not opposed to having a lot of data that we can look at, but I think that if I'm not mistaken, three or four years ago, a town survey was sent to every household, just having input from families and residents on, answered this question and many others, and the respondents, I'm not sure how many did respond, but it was in favor. Am I right?
I think you are.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Tom Lee, from Center Street. Yeah, I'm sympathetic to your point of view about, you know, why should the board of selectmen just make, go one step further than people vote on fifteen signatures on the ballot. But I'd like the board of selectmen to consider the fact that this is actually an issue larger than that. I don't think it's a matter of being one step ahead. I think it's a matter of agreeing that the issue here is of importance to the town, that the most accurate opinion from the town should be reached. Given that a town meeting is something we treasure, I think ballot is a way to clarify, confirm that is a factor for the town, because there are so many issues that surround the whole method of town meeting, that I think put into question how we can move that vote.
Thank you. I agree with you. Thank you. Eloquent said. But the issue is, it's non-binding. Remember that part. You're asking us to do something that's non-binding. And so, back to the issue of town meeting. Town meeting was binding. Town meeting gave us the charge to come back to you with the data that we brought to you this evening. The hours are directive, and we are unanimous as a board in our commitment to the thorough research of what the warrant told us to do, what you told us to do. So, to think in terms of something that's non-binding, is asking us to do something for you, which you can do on your own, but yet is completely different from what the warrant article gave us, in that context of what we brought to you this evening.
It also confuses matters once again.
But could I just add that I think what we're all acknowledging is just based on the no votes at town meeting last year, that raising four hundred signatures is not going to be difficult.
Correct.
So the question is, do we put the group who wants the non-binding ballot question through the exercise of getting the four hundred signatures, or do we accept the ballot as it is put before us tonight? That's the question.
Correct. Yep, correct.
I think Marco might have had his hand up.
Um, yeah, Marco. Yeah, everybody who's advocating for the ballot are people that we know are against the rail trail. So the agenda is transparent. I don't think that that is necessarily the ship drawn to the conclusion. But it just, it pains me a little bit that we're looking at these civic, these speeches of civic duty, democracy. But what is an attempt to unwind what was done in town meeting last year? I would appreciate if people would be more transparent about their motives for things like this. And I'm a member of friends of Dover Freeway. You know, we got a resolve at town meeting last year, and have dominated collectively hundreds of hours of our time to take the charge that we got out of the town meeting, to move this forward, to devote time to fundraising and other initiatives to try and help the town reach a resolve, in a way that benefits us, in no way different than any other town. And it just sort of disappoints me that we have people standing up, and making arguments that are not completely transparent, and, you know, threatens undermining the very fabric of bringing things to town meeting and discussing them, but pretending that the other voters aren't.
I'd like to follow.
I'd like to follow, too. So, may you, would you please identify yourself? So, as far as transparency goes, probably none of the touch that issue, right? But I've been here for months, and what has been a comment of the rail trail, what I went through last year, me, my family, my daughter, my school, my children, my friends, lots of my friends who are working on it, was a very, very uncomfortable experience. I had lots of really mean emails come my way. I had signs being there. I had people questioning my children about being my mother's parents. I had someone go to parks and call me racist because I was opposed to the rail bed in my backyard. They'll not say that person's name, you know, for much of it. It was the lowest moment that I've ever felt in my life in twenty years. I had old people, old men and women that I met, that could not say that town meeting. And they did get a vote. I had friends of mine, very close friends of mine over the last fifteen years, tell me that they were too nervous to come to town meeting and stand up in opposition of the rail trail, because they are also friends with the rail. It was not a good feeling. I know that it was a lot of work for friends in the Freeway and the Beach of Dover people to get people to town meeting. I mean, the chaos that ensued by email, social media, and talking to people was crazy. It just seems to me that we could have a ballot vote as another option. Two weeks after town meeting, we have a full day, seven AM to six PM, we will become beforehand to work, you and your husband or partner, spouse, whatever, in the conference of the district or the vote. It makes more sense to get a good reading on whether or not we should vote.
But, excuse me? The issue is, and this is where the confusion comes in, at town meeting, which is binding, we are going to make a decision as to whether or not we want the selectmen to sign the lease. Two weeks after town meeting, there will then be a non-binding referendum.
Probably five years ago or seven years ago, we should have had the ballot vote saying we want a rail trail, before we went through any of this process. I think that was probably a good opportunity, that we had Dover rail trail. I think we went down the path before we checked everyone. And believe me, if the ballot vote comes out as, let's vote for rail trail, I am fine with that. I really just want everybody to weigh in who wants to. We have six thousand people on the town, four thousand some on registered voters. To have it decided with only, you know, four hundred yes, three hundred no, doesn't seem like the right representation.
And having a non-binding vote, what does that do for us after a binding vote at town meeting? And this is a rhetorical question, I do not expect an answer. I think we've heard, I think we've heard everyone's opinions here, and we have to vote on this this evening, Mrs. Grant?
You actually don't have to, no action is a negative.
Wrong, Miss Engels. Miss Engels, I agree with everything that you say about how the meeting last year brought out that major confluence of some people. And that's totally, I mean, we are one hundred percent one, we have to accept the vote, that's not what we want this town meeting to do. And so, that was not what I was suggesting was the right outcome from the town meeting. That part is something that I don't think I will...
Mr. Rupetti?
Just a quick question, maybe Dana can answer this. The warrant article that would be a town meeting is technically advisory to the board of selectmen, because it was my understanding, it seemed like the town meeting last year, a question of whether the town meeting could direct the board of selectmen to enter into the lease. And I thought that we were told by town council that, in fact, there's a separation of powers here, the town meeting is acting in effect as a legislative branch, and then the board of selectmen are acting as executive branch, and that while the town meeting can advise technically the selectmen are signing the lease in their fiduciary capacity and representation for the town, in their executive capacity, and that we cannot direct the selectmen to do so. It could be that I misunderstood, because obviously I had a lot of other things going on last May, and not to the town meeting. But Dana, can you clarify that?
Mr. Rupetti, you are correct. It was made clear to us last year after significant research that the town can authorize the selectmen, but the selectmen independently decide what to do with that authority.
I just wanted to make sure that we were working on the same, obviously, as a town moderator, I can't take a position on this. But I just wanted to make sure that we were working on the same, I'm thinking of the same book. Thank you.
And I think, I think, Mr. Rupetti, that's an excellent point, and one of the things that we have consistently said as a board, that we would take no action unless there was, unless it was the opinion of the town that we should take the action to execute the lease.
But it's still advisory.
Right, but...
Sir?
Tom Lee, from Center Street. I just wanted to respond to a gentleman who made comment about ballot transparency. It was an example, I don't think of anyone here to be dissenting on the issue. But I, as a matter of fact, I was a little ambivalent initially when I first learned about the trouble. What happened, the evolution of this debate was that I, many things about the whole rail travel, the implications of the happenstance that made me feel very strongly that it's not a good point of the town. And in that process, I realized that many people in this town properly are not, are not educated about this issue, which leads, I think, to a counterpoint to your discussion about the role of the selectmen, which my understanding is, it's one of leadership. And if leadership means that people in the town need to be educated in order to make informed decisions about the rail trail, almost best for the town, why not have that issue brought to a ballot where more people can voice this, have more time to understand it, and be educated in a way that will give us the best resolution for all people in the town?
Thank you.
Ms. Gilmore?
I just wanted to clarify, coming to this, was it basically saying in these terms that the vote at a town meeting is then non-binding, advisory?
It's advisory.
So it's, so it's not like we would have a non-binding ballot and a binding vote, we have a non-binding ballot and an advisory vote. So we still end up...
Although, you know... Although, I, once again, I want to... Although, I, once again, I want to make this really clear, you know, as, as a board, we felt really strongly that if the town said, "Vote no," we would vote not to execute the lease. We would not execute the lease. Whether, whether, you know, one, one could argue that we're not executing our executive prerogative then, but that's what we committed to the town. So if, if, in my mind, if town meeting were to vote affirmatively for us to enter into the lease, that would be my directive. And I think having a non-binding vote come up with the opposite answer just confuses matters.
But I think it is individual. In other words, I, I do feel, in fact, I hearken back to 2014 and the Carroll Park vote that was technically non-binding, but the board of selectmen elected to make it binding. Though, I take it back, it was Parks and Rec that decided that they would consider it a binding vote. So theoretically, I suppose the non-binding status of a ballot question, we could opt to make binding to apply to whatever the decision is coming out of town meeting, to further inform the decision coming out of town meeting.
Valerie?
Sorry, Valerie, but again, I really want to stress this is going to be extremely confusing for the general public. Completely undermines town meeting. They feel, people feel, they go to town meeting and they go in such a way, and to have it completely voided within several weeks after, potentially by a ballot vote where many people, I strongly feel, if they go to the town meeting and vote, may not show up to vote on the ballot. And I think it is going to be a very misleading outcome. So I, I really strongly, again, Mr. Jeffries, I agree with you. If you are very adamant, if you want this on the ballot, you have the ability to get votes and signatures, and that seems like a reasonable route to go if you feel that that's the best way to get an actor's vote on this. But I think that at the town meeting, the town will have weighed in on this issue twice, once in our previous town meeting last year, and again with more information, additional information in this town meeting. And I, I think that we have to put an audit in history that Dover has relied heavily on the outcome of the town meetings.
Well, it is a form of government.
Just make one quick question.
Yes, sir.
During this discussion, I made a statement that helped with your decision. What I was referring to was the separation of powers argument that Mr. Ropati suggested much more about earlier.
So, is the debate over?
Any other questions or discussions? And thank you all for your comments.
I can start. I came to this meeting thinking to myself that what doesn't matter, how I vote, because the citizens of Dover who would like to have something on the ballot have a mechanism to do it. And through this discussion, I feel more strongly about my initial position, which was that town meeting is a form of government. And not only that, I feel very strongly that having a non-binding vote on the ballot and a warrant article at town meeting, I think that's just going to be extremely confusing to voters.
As I stated before, I, I have always been in favor of having this question put on the ballot. I felt this way coming out of town meeting last year. I was disturbed by the crowd. I was disturbed by how difficult it was to get an accurate vote. I don't believe we could have shoehorned in another 150, 200, 300, 400, 500 people if we had needed to. So we have many more voters than are going to be able to be present in the annual town meeting. This is not about, to be perfectly candid, this is not about choosing a particular outcome or wishing to take a particular side. But I do feel that in a very significant case like this, that the most voters that we can possibly reach who have an opportunity to weigh in on this is the way that this town needs to go. And as far as setting precedent, it was done over the turf fields in Carroll Park three years ago.
With a nuance that never came to town meeting. That's why they were going to circumvent town meeting, and that's why the gift policy was put in place because Park and Rec, they own the land, right? Or they have jurisdiction over the land.
They controlled the land.
Right. And they were going to go out and get private donations and just build the field without coming to town meeting. And that is why the selectmen felt so strongly about putting that on the ballot.
But if I remember the history, the selectmen had the ability to reject the gift and the funding for that project to begin with, simply to reject it. But you opted for the ballot question to be better informed by more of the voters.
I believe that the gift policy came into place because it would have never come to us.
There's actually a statute, Madam Chair, that requires the selectmen to vote to authorize expenditure of funds that are received as gifts. It came to light during that period, and I believe, my recollection is that the selectmen did want some sort of public parameter. But as you said, Mrs. Hunter, they had no town meeting parameter, so the ballot was the only question, the only avenue they had.
See, my, my belief is, and I'll let you speak, John, but my belief is that this is, we're not bringing forward the ballot question. The citizens are bringing forward the ballot question.
Right. And Candace and Rob, Madam Chairman, I, I think that there's, there's compelling arguments and for, for both sides of this. And so I, I tend to agree with, with Valerie. I, I think that sitting here in the context of a board, a board decision to, to, to take something that town meeting has done seems to be counterproductive. And yet, the avenue still exists. So I, I think we can, you can all accomplish exactly what you want to accomplish and still, I think it's incumbent upon us to maintain the, the, the charge that we received from town meeting. So I, I think that my view is in favor of giving the citizens the opportunity to get the signatures on the petition. You still have that opportunity. I think as a board, I think we've accomplished our job to give you this opportunity, this forum, to do the research. We've done exactly what you gave us the charge to do. I think if we do something other than that, we're circumventing town meeting. And I also, I agree with, with Madam Chairman, I think I, I agree with you that it would be very confusing. I think that we've listened thoroughly to what you have all said, and not only here this evening, but in everything that has transpired over the past year. So I, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. So, all in favor of the non-binding public opinion advisory question?
Aye.
Opposed?
To oppose.
Okay. Thank you all. The next order of business is the order and assignment of the town warrant. So is there any way we could have two meetings, one with all the organizational business in it? Yep, Mr. Moderator.
Fairly right in thinking about how I have a coalition office, how we could practice that to be. Now I'm hoping that we can expand the number of counters to extra night of vote to have a quicker voting process. And also, we're trying to figure out what mechanics we could use to have a ballot for the question of the rail trail. I think that there's a pretty good chance if we do have a secret ballot for the question, that we will go into a second night for the meeting because of the additional time that would be required. I would remind everybody that even though we have a vote on an article, that vote can be reconsidered as long as town meeting has not been adjourned. So if we do go into a second meeting, a second night, I'd like to remind everybody, and I would remind everybody again in the evening of the first evening, that nothing is settled until, like, hour of the final adjournment of the town meeting. I think we try our best to define this for one meeting. Last year, we were able to do it. It was a lot of work, and I think Alicia Hoffman is in charge of the process of town meeting for doing a perfectly good job. But depending on what we decide to do, we'd expect a ballot on this question. I think that it's likely if we decide to have a secret ballot, that we will go into a second meeting. So just to mention it now, we say, we say this repeatedly, until early days, remind people that it's not over until that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, question for you, Mr. Ropati. Do you mean a secret ballot on some of the votes within this? Are you talking about the ballot question that we just discussed?
We, the, as you know, kind of the town meeting is covered by, upon hearing on the desk, it's the moderator's, big moderator's association, town meeting time. And it does allow the town meeting to have a secret ballot rather than have a stand-up vote or a voice vote.
I see.
And the difficulty is the mechanics. If we have 1,000 people present at town meeting and we use a ballot machine, even if we're able to process one vote every five seconds, it's going to take an hour and a half to process those votes. And that's what we're up against in terms of trying to decide, you know, certainly, there are certainly merits on both sides, and I can certainly understand people concerned about privacy and difficulty that their families have encountered because of positions on initiatives or intentions. At the same time, we also have to optimize the efficiency of conducting the meeting and people's time being very valuable. And we're, we're working very hard now and trying to accommodate those competing concerns and see what kind of process we can come up with.
Could you do what local ballot box, or local county just covered up?
Yeah, that's actually one, one of the things that we're considering is having several ballot boxes that the counters would bring. We're going to change the configuration of the cafeteria so it will be a seating arrangement like the auditorium, so it'll be much easier to process the votes. And boxes could be brought by the counters to each room, and people could ask their vote forward. There'll be a pre-prepared ballot. If we go to that room, there'll be a yes call and a no call. You'll tear off the perforated section of the vote that you want, pass it down to the person at the end that goes into the box.
The other way you could make the ask is colored with a flag.
Well, then it would lose the confidence.
Oh, okay.
That's a good point, but. If we can talk to, at the meeting, by the way, anybody else that has ideas, I can talk to, because we appreciate ideas, help us with this idea. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I was thinking PricewaterhouseCoopers, they do the Oscars, it may be good enough for town meeting. Might be a little pricey, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Might be a little pricey, but. All right. So our order of business is to arrange, do we have to do this this evening?
Ideally, yes, because you're going to be presented with a final warrant next week to sign, next meeting to sign.
So can we do that?
It creates a document production problem for us.
Oh, so, yeah. So is there, are there any changes to the order that we approved last week?
We never approved the order.
We didn't approve the order. It was just a list.
It's just random.
The order is typically how they come in. It worked like last year, they were in a certain place, we just get up there, let it go to the board to decide.
So, you know, certainly the lease will be an issue, so we could, you know, we could move up how much discussion we think we're going to have on these items, and those that are going to have a lot of discussion have earlier on in the evening.
Well, but as Mr. Ropati said, the problem is, is that if anybody stands up and leaves, then their vote is not secured. So in fact, it sounds to me as though if there was a second night, the same attendees from night one have to come back for night two.
That's true, because anything that was moved in the first night can be reconsidered in the second.
Correct. So it's, I don't know that we can move things up to the front. I'm not sure people would understand, you know, I think some people would still leave.
But we can keep saying, you can't leave.
Well.
I mean, there are a number, there are a number of issues, like for example, you know, the air conditioning at Chicagorink School, I would imagine there'd be a lot of debate on that. That's a big ticket item. The lease, 46 Springdale, there's going to be some presentations on that.
Yes.
Solar agreement.
Any suggestions?
Well, the boiler plates always stay at the same place.
Right, so one through nine is the same.
That's right. And I added the new bylaw to establish wall in place, because that will be a boiler plate raised before the actual, the water will off limits.
Okay.
Oh, and then 23 is pay as you throw.
Oh, yeah.
So it looks like the block that go basically from 19 through 23 are, even 24, are the most time consuming. And then we have business items afterwards.
What do you think the board of study committee will be?
I think that has been removed.
Okay.
It's also one of the things that our article eighteen might be dismissed.
Traditionally, that it's, the, the items that are voted on are read by the moderator and asked for a hold of place, you know, in the event that there is a question, those are, he comes back to them as they are brought to his attention. So with the, with the exception of some things that we may not know about, I think one through nine are going to go through fairly quickly. So traditionally, that's the way.
Right, but the problem is with Article Four is you have to read every, every line item, so it takes time.
So is your, Candace, is your suggestion to move 19 through 23?
No, actually, I, I think they're in a pretty good place. I remember Mr. Ropati was able to really move quickly through the remaining ones to get us out for that evening. So I don't think it makes sense to push them to the very, very end. You might have some enticement to whip through the last eight or so if we could get the bulk of the, the very time consuming ones taken care of, sort of two-thirds through the meeting or three-quarters of the way through the meeting.
So within 19 through 20... So, within 19 through 26, do we want to change any of those orders? It's just hard to know.
Right.
Sometimes the board has also debated on the special articles, between articles they think will take more time potentially, and then put in one that might take less time other than that. But the special articles are usually the most, the general most conversation.
And that's a very good point. Maybe it kind of allows people to catch their breath.
Go to the bathroom.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, should I say that? Is the idea that we approach on each petition like we did last year, that certainly changes our time frame?
Right.
Yes. The answer is, there will be an opportunity for presentations where they're deemed necessary. Presentations will be as short as possible and with the interest of time. So, what we're considering is, in the interest of time, in the interest of, as Mr. Repetti has numerously pointed out, that numerously times pointed out, the meeting isn't over until it's over. So, essentially, anything that is heard can be reopened before the gavel is finally drawn.
So, you don't have 30 minutes?
I believe you can limit the limits on presentations.
So, I always thought, and maybe I'm wrong, that within 30 minutes of a vote taking place, you could reconsider that vote? Or is there no time limit?
The time affects the amount or the quantity of the vote. If the motion occurs within 30 minutes, it's a simple majority vote to reconsider. If the motion to reconsider occurs beyond 30 minutes after the vote was taken and announced, then it's a two-thirds vote. So, the town fathers and mothers, in their wisdom, created, this is in a bylaw, they adopted a bylaw that is more difficult to wait until people have left to go home and then ask, make a motion for reconsideration. In that case, it's a two-thirds vote. Of course, at that point, since it's a two-thirds vote, sometimes we have to take a standing count to determine whether we have a two-thirds.
So that we can prolong it even more.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, you know, that was thoughtful. So, what I would suggest then is, I think if we could somehow get the Chicagorick AC close to the capital budget, you know, that would be a good thing, although that's Article Five, I guess.
Yeah, we typically don't want to violate the order of the first night.
I don't want to mess with anything. Okay.
But we could perhaps put it in between 10 and 11 as currently numbered?
That would be good.
Certainly, or put it in after 11 because those are all capital improvements.
Right, that's a good, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
For all of the schools, the regional campus.
Okay. Okay, all right. And then, and then I would say, the three items that there's going to be a lot of debate on are going to be the 46 Springdale, or maybe not.
Shouldn't be a lot of debate.
The lease, and pay as you throw.
Well, one, two, three, right there.
Right, that's what I do. Right. So, why don't we do that? And then the rest, as you put them in.
Does that help, or is that, do you need more?
Yeah, maybe, just so I can be clear. Just tell me which one is.
Did you think keeping 19, 20, 21, and 23 all together?
Might as well.
Okay.
And where would they go? Would they move or step?
I would move, I would, well, at the rate we're going.
They're all pretty much in order.
Yeah, and actually, the funds about the engaging the wildlife habitat seems to me to be applicable following the MBTA.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think I'd leave that there.
So, in essence, we're just moving Article 14 to after, Article 11?
11.
Right, perfect.
Good.
And then the solar array particles are all, they're all pretty much.
Those should be really quick.
Right.
Well, it's accepting, it's accepting money in a pile of programs, so.
Excellent.
So, that should be good. All right. So, now.
So, do you accept a motion to move 14 to 11? Is that correct?
Do we need to have a motion?
We don't typically do that. We got our direction, so we know what to do.
Okay.
It's a ministerial action.
So, I guess we have an intergovernmental agreement once again? Who's going to speak today?
I can't.
Okay.
I spoke with, well, I communicated via email with the superintendent of schools, and says that we introduce the waiver, the town of Dover, Sherburne, to allow them to choose to fund their allocation of the capital improvements and equipment, you know, being their expression, if we sign this agreement. And the wording is identical, the only thing that has changed is the amount. The total amount of the capital items is $364,700 this year. And Dover's allocable percentage is 56.67%, which is a total of $206,675.29. I believe that is based on student population.
As well, I think October 1st. All right. So, John, a bunch of years ago, we entered into an agreement with Sherburne that would allow each town to decide independently how they wanted to fund the capital at the region. Sherburne preferred to have a debt override. We wanted the option of either raising debt or paying cash. So, the interchangeable agreement gives us that option. So, it's just a continuation of something that we've done for the last three years. So, do you want a motion? Do you want to have a discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right, so I will make a motion to execute the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Sherburne and Dover, and the Dover Sherburne Regional School. And it's for the upcoming fiscal year, correct?
Yes, fiscal '18.
For fiscal '18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We all have to sign.
Mm-hmm.
A couple of times I've taken the originals home with me.
Yeah. Reading on the train.
Right. All right, so the next item is the revised Police Department capital budget.
I can speak to them, Sandra. So, apparently, the capital budget committee has been having extensive conversations with Chief McGowan about altering the experimental rotation of police cars from the standard 1-2, 1-2, 1-2, so that this year, where the chief had recommended this as a two-car year in that rotation, upon reflection and looking at the particulars of the cruiser to be replaced, he has agreed to revise the recommendation for fiscal '18 so that it be a one-car year. He points out in his memo then, though, that that would mean next year would be a two-car year instead of a one-car year, and the following year would be a two-car year instead of a, oh, it would be a two-car year as well, so it'd be a 1-1, 2-2.
And that was made clear at capital budgets, that if you're not going to have the consistent 1-2, 1-2 road, that's going to be based on criteria, you could even have a year where maybe you have to have three.
Correct. Thank you.
So, should we make a motion to accept?
Yeah, you have to approve this recommendation.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised Police Department capital budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief McGowan, for the many hours you spent at capital budget. So, given the time in the evening, how about the, discussing the next steps for capital planning of Carroll Community? Do you do that at the next meeting? Does that make, and as a matter of fact, I'm actually having coffee with Kathy Weld on Saturday, so I'll have some insight, if that's okay with everybody.
I'm fine with that.
Also, I would like to entertain potentially rescheduling a March 2nd meeting, a conflict has come up with the school negotiations. It's, so.
So, that's what Thursday you need to do.
Right, I'm just thinking, we have warrant, actually, pay as you throw is March 1st, so that's Wednesday night, that's an open forum.
Okay, that's not going to work.
No. The 30th, 28th of, 28th of February is a Tuesday.
That works.
Would work for me.
That would work.
We'll be back. Back by popular demand.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It was a challenge from Mr. McCullough. He said to me, aren't you the chair? You have a conflict? All right. The next item is, so I appreciate everybody changing their schedule. So, the next item in other business is special licenses. And this evening, we only have two, which is great. March 25th, and one is at Elm Bank, and the second one, boy, these are planners, July 21st, also at Elm Bank. And both of these have been signed up by the chief of police. And so, I would make a motion to approve the two special licenses as described earlier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I believe under other business, I don't know if we want to do it now, but there's the, June 4th, the Norfolk Hunt Club has requested permission to use 46 Springdale.
Right, and I can report, coming out of the working group, we'll be having the open forum. In fact, I was going to make that announcement, let me make that announcement. February 15th, at 7:30, right here in the Great Hall, we'll have an open forum, the working group that has been putting together a number of different interesting options for 46 Springdale and the disposition of this coming into this article. We'd love, we welcome everyone to come. It should be very interesting. We'll have a PowerPoint that I'll be doing from sort of the position of the group, and Landvest has been consultant that has worked with the group. Landvest will also be presenting, and so I welcome you all to the 15th. So, with that in mind, I was asked about, would horses have access at 46 Springdale in June? And of the three options that we are currently considering, all three of them give access for horses to pass through 46 Springdale. So, that should not be a problem in June.
So, do we need to vote on? Okay, so I make a motion to provide the horses with access to 46 Springdale on June the 4th. I guess they're owners too.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to make sure we are posting all the special hearings on the website, so if people want to go look to see when those.
Yes, the 15th of February, the 1st of March. I don't believe we have any others set up yet.
No, but we should, and also, it's always on our meeting calendar, right?
I do have that all of the open forums on this, so.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Next is the minutes from our June 19th meeting. It's a little shorter evening than this meeting this evening. We're going to have a lot of fun, right, in the minutes? So, I had, I really have no comments or additions to the meeting, to the minutes. Again, excellent job.
No changes.
So, why don't I make a motion to approve the minutes from the July, July, January 19th meeting?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens' comments? Thank you all for attending. Thank you all for staying this late. And I look forward to continued debate. So, with that, I do have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to re-adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?